Today, may I call this meeting to order? One quick announcement is that, I'm not sure everybody knows, but Keith Bryant's underway at Open Heart Certainty and he's doing well and back at home with Facebook and recuperating famously. So, in his stead, Candy Palmer from the Department of State. Title, personal office.
Uh, yeah, that works.
We'll be filling in for Keith. So, we do have here, oh, um, for this evening, members of the commission, myself, Ken Gilbert, then by the way, the secretary, Kevin Sheen, and finally, I think, Beckman, and Ryan DeWitt will be in person there. Please make a motion on the wonderfully recorded minutes.
Now what?
Wonderful recorded minutes.
I would make a motion to approve the wonderfully recorded minutes.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And if the rest is yours, please move on.
Uh-uh, okay, we're gonna jump right down to administrative review. Okay, item number five, Dean, one, Prospect Place, Prospect Place East. I believe the two applicants are here to speak on their own behalf. Once they make their presentation, I'll go on your phones.
My name is Ralph Silas, we're being reviewed and represented by the property LLC. I thank you very much for taking the time to prepare the request. The Prospect Place, um, the Prospect Place, um, complex was begun many years ago. It had sort of an initial phase, and then the last remaining, ooh, that's much better, the last remaining units were left unbuilt. That first initial phase, that developer never put in, a section of sidewalk that is marked in blue on the plan at Yudin, that connected from Mechanic Street to the internal complex. The next phase in which we took over, had a section of sidewalk marked in yellow that then attempts to connect the internal complex to Mechanic Street. Unfortunately, the actual topography of the complex itself, mixed with having the already existing retention wall along Mechanic Street, as well as pretty sizable floodgates and the rip rap in the back there, doesn't really lend to this plan actually being executed with a nice neighborhood feel to it. For these reasons, we are looking to, to allow to not put these internal sidewalks in and maintain the green space for the complex.
Any questions?
How do the occupants of the complex feel about that?
They actually are in favor of it. The first initial portion has very well grown, essentially very mature trees that were placed, that literally planted in place of the sidewalk, and the occupants actually really like the screening for the internal complex from the people below to those above, which is kind of their second floor windows, right there. And kind of as it meanders through and connects, it's just, it's very, it's not a nice sort of topography to have, a walkway in that section, so they seem to be in favor. We haven't heard anything to be, uh, to talk about.
And you don't have a lot of people walking in the road?
Um, there is, there is a section of sidewalk that goes around the complex.
Okay.
That connects to Mechanic Street, but again, like I said, this is really internally in their own, their own complexes, essentially their own driveways and any kind of parking.
Thank you.
Sure.
Do you, uh, do you know what the actual grade would be if the walk, I, I looked at the topography plan, it's a very small scale in our review memo, but did anybody actually calculate what the slopes of the walk would be if they were built?
Have not gone to that, that, to this extent. We'll say that the path as shown sort of goes directly to Mechanic Street, and it would be far too steep to, to be, you know, to be allowed, so there would definitely have to be some sort of meandering around of that. Even at that extent, it just seems to be something that it really would be very forced to be there, especially when talking about weather conditions, ice and things like that, so.
Yeah, shots are five percent, do you think?
Um, I would, I would, yeah. Yeah, I would definitely think so.
Okay. It appears to be as well in excess of five percent.
Correct.
And five percent is, is pretty much a standard on, in terms of what's reasonable.
Yeah.
Particularly if you're the, like, the authority.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's helpful.
Sure.
I'd just like to thank you for the pictures.
Oh, you're very welcome. Any more questions?
We approve the removal of internal walks pursuant to the request and as articulated in the request.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
There's my notes all ready to tell.
Fifty-four minutes.
Next up will be item number 21, 249 zoning permit for the Stonetown Country Club. They are requesting an application to construct a 12 by 12 and a half foot restroom facility on the golf course, pretty much located in the north corner. In this case, the south corner.
Pardon me?
It's really the south corner on this particular.
Pete Gardner, Woodston's Country Club, clubs been around for over 30 years now, and probably has made decisions to put their real dock on the course, close to the outhouse that they're out there. And we chose a spot in southeast corner of the property that'll serve a couple, be easy to access from a couple of holes. And it's all, it's all building, three stalls, two for the ladies, one for the guys, and we've got approval from the Ledgeside Health District, not within 100 of the weapons, if anything's worth proposing, and I hope he's gonna approve it tonight so we can move forward.
Any questions?
Just located in a flood zone, any chance, again, I'm trying to look at the site plan, it's really reproductive, not, clearly.
I've got it.
Yeah, I can tell you a question.
It's 154 foot, new ground, that's the, yeah, and the elevator needs.
It's its own separate leaf field?
Yep.
Nice little building.
Public, public water out there, or well water?
Well water.
Well water?
Yeah.
Let me make a motion to approve the application.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Good night, everybody.
Okay, next on the agenda is the Mark Denzmore application, but I don't, oh, you are, okay. Is Rosy coming? Item number PG 2125, special use permit in Can for Mark J. Denzmore Living Trust, special use permit in coastal area management review applications for demolition of a one-story retail building and construction of a 44 and a half by 30 foot two-story mixed-use structure with office and retail on the first floor and one apartment on the second. Property located at 26 Old Stonetown Road, Stonetown, assessor's map 153, block two, lot three, zone GC60. Just a quick note, you had approved this structure that was just about twice the size, and that's, that report from the applicant was copy and paste for this, so every type place where you see two, two apartments on the second floor, it really should say one apartment on the second floor.
Excuse me, Kenny, is there one more old business item on our agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's good. Table and recommended on that one, sorry.
Is our law required?
Yes.
Table book?
Make a motion to approve.
Second?
All those in favor? Okay.
Pursuant to general statutes of the state of Connecticut, revisions, Act 258, law amendments thereto, and pursuant to the zoning regulations of the town of Stonetown, Connecticut, the planning and zoning commission hereby gives notice that it will hold a public hearing at the Stonetown Board of Education District Office, 40 Field Street, Lockington, Connecticut, on Tuesday, October 19th, 2021, at 7:00 PM. And as has been stated, the first application is PG 2125, U.P. in Can, Mark Denzmore Living Trust, special use permit and coastal area management review applications for the demolition of a one-story retail building and construction of a 44, 45, and 30-foot two-story mixed-use structure with office, retail on the first floor, and apartment on the second. Property located at 26 Old Stonetown Road, Stonetown, assessor's map 153, block two, lot three, zone GC60.
Thank you, William. So, seated this evening will be Ted Sheen, Fred Dykman, myself, then Gilbert, Lynn Conway, and Ryan DeWitt. Is there a sign up sheet in there?
It's at the front of this thing.
In front of the room, there's a sign up sheet if anybody wants to speak in favor or against, or general comments, but the process will be, the applicant will go first, then all those in favor, then those opposed, general comments, the rebuttal by the applicant, and then the staff report, discussion following, closing of the hearing, and then our vote. Good timing, Rusty. You need time to set up, Rusty?
Right.
You need time to set up?
Right.
Okay. Good timing.
Want the microphone? Okay, tonight we're here for a special use permit. What I want to do is just go item to item with the special permit requirements. This is a very small project that we're proposing here. It's a 10,000-foot lot, proposing one apartment and an office down below, and that's about it. In order even to do that, to get parking and access, we're getting an easement from the property that's based into the East 38. Now, previously, we had started variances, and I've got the new board for a building that was twice this size. Issues came up with the ownership and how that was supposed to transpire, so now we're down to one building that's, you know, half, you know, half the size. Okay, going through, I went through the special permit requirements, and one of the ones, the first one is, you're intent to ensure that this growth rate, that your start growth rate of the town, it remains at 1%. Well, we're barely doubling, we're not even doubling the size of the building that's there, so I don't really see, once again, it's a very small thing, that, um, I'm not sure how that's dealt with. The plan of conservation and development specifically targets the transitional commercial areas adjacent to the village areas for mixed use. And several years ago, I came to this, you know, this commission to view a zoning, a text amendment to allow us to have a, you know, a more abundant amount of house, and been reduced quite a bit because of some of the development, Brookhaven, some of the, you know, large developments, and this is obviously a very small, uh, project. One of the things for us to look at is, is this proposal offer the least possible disruptions to existing neighborhood areas. Well, we're adjacent to Route 1, which is 150 foot wide right of way, and the next house is 50 or 70 feet beyond that. That's the only residential property within eyesight and nearby to this site. Uh, the environment, you know, we're supposed to make, not just rough the, the environment, well, the site's already built upon, and we're gonna leave ledge that's there, but that's really the only, uh, natural feature. Um, the, one of the big issues in town, townwide, that I'm sure you're all familiar with, is the sewer moratorium. A decision was made by the Water Pollution Control Authority to allow, um, projects that had begun prior to the moratorium being consorted to proceed. And essentially, what we're doing here is we're adding two, two bedrooms, two baths, and a kitchen, so that's essentially a fairly small house. And the existing facility, the ground floor, has the same toilet room that the proposed office will have. In the expenditure plan, I have no idea about that. Now, there are two sets of standards, there are the general standards for issuing a special permit, and then there are some specific ones, ones for the residential mixed use. Once again, some of the stuff is repetitive, the proposal is adequately served by water and sanitary, electricity, cable TV, it's all there, it's a well-established site. Once again, the public will be fully protected for fire safety, security, the security equipment is designed to eliminate hazards. We're building a building in 2021, okay, that, you know, any kind of fire hazards or safety hazards and alarm systems will have to be incorporated just beneath the code. The transportation services are adequate, uh, this is, this is essentially a, kind of an odd street, it's one way to the right and two ways to the left, to the west it's two, so there's really not, um, you know, turned out, a tremendous amount of traffic generation than being an office and one apartment. And the police commission has already looked at this, and I think it's in your notes, to indicate that, you know, we've achieved what they're looking for. Dangerous objectionable elements to area residence, can't imagine, you know, what that would be, so I think we're, we're clear on that. No adverse impact on the character of the district, this is a real jumble of buildings. We have a fire station, two metal sheds that house the oil, an oil company, a restaurant on one side, a vacant restaurant across the street, and then a newly, um, converted building to allow four residential units to go directly across the street above the retail facility, Mr. Coastal Florin. So, so we've, you know, gone through the architectural design review board, and I think they, you know, signed off that we've developed a building that will not affect the character. Once again, no deleterious impact or irretrievable environmental resources, this has been a developed site, with grass, some very poor parking, and a building, and some ledge, that's about it. All applicable state, federal, and local laws have been complied with, to the best of our knowledge. I mean, there's, you know, potentially something in the fire code or the building code, but we'll deal with that at that stage. And then, something I mentioned earlier is consistent with the plan of conservation and development. This is something that, after the zoning, planning and zoning commission reduced the residential capacity in the GC60 zone, they looked at and they said, well, you know, we've really gotta revisit that and look at getting more residential in these mixed areas, the sort of village transitional, transitional commercial areas is what this is, what this is. I mean, between the restaurant next door, you know, being renovated and looking to be very, you know, successful, the Mr. Coastal Florin, now with some people there in the evenings with apartments, and then potentially something across at the Sailor Ed's, you know, I think this is sort of this poor stepchild of GC60 zones, and I think it's starting to, you know, make some inroads. Okay, and there's a number of conditions you can make, I think they've been identified in staff report, so there's really nothing, you know, I think, we can go back to those, and Art Hayworth's here also, my name's Russell Sargent, I might have missed a, I don't know if he signed in, so. And then there's a second set of additional standards for a special permit to allow housing in residential mixed use zone. Minimum lot area of 5,000 is required, well, we're twice that. Residential density is one per 5,000 square feet, once again, we're twice that, so we have one per 10,000. And then there's a requirement, when they, originally when the planning and zoning commission reduced the amount of residential buildout in GC60 zone, it was quite a short, you know, it was like on the 90,000 acre across the street, we could get a, two residential units in. After the zoning amendment we got, we have four there, which is, you know, there's an additional extension there. There's a requirement that at least a third of the property remain commercial, it's 50/50 there, it's basically the first floor and second floor, footprint are the same. Parking, um, we have the required amount of spaces, if we have one extra, there's a range there, um, we have nine spaces, two of which we have a sign on the building indicating they are strictly for residential use. Uh, let's see. Yeah, and there's, you know, then in the next section, they talk about the residential and commercial uses are compatible. Um, you know, once again, we have an office downstairs and a, a two-bedroom apartment upstairs, there's a restaurant next door, I think we're compatible with that, I'd say the fire station and the oil depot might be less compatible to the, what we're doing, but they're pre-existing. And then, once again, this is sort of the character of the neighborhood, we're, are we conforming with urban design features of the surrounding area? Uh, they're pretty, they're pretty dispersed, I mean, I'm not sure what you could define as that. And we also were carrying on that tradition or that character of the surrounding area, once again, I have no idea. So those, those are the things that, you know, we need, I, you know, I think, you know, you need to confirm that we've achieved the special permit. And with that, I guess I could ask questions, and then Art is here to talk about the site plan, if you have any questions on the specifics of that.
Any questions so far?
What's the total square footage of existing building?
It's, I don't know.
2,500 square meters.
And what's the square footage of the proposed building?
27,000.
The floor is, the roof's probably just 15,000 square meters.
Right, so 3,000, or is this the previous number? And actually, where the, you know, that's, that's the bulk of the building, the way the floor area is measured, the stairways don't count, and, you know, certain things don't count.
Thank you.
The, um, the, go ahead.
Are you combining the lots?
No, we were at one point, one donor, two trusts, and the beneficiaries under one of the trusts, um, had rights that we, that we found out about after we'd already proceeded the previous process, and it was gonna challenge Mr. Denzmore's plan for a renovation.
So, the sightings of the building is, is it designated to that, of the, the whole lot?
Yeah, no, it's, it, I mean, I can't.
A variance was granted this past week on the 12th by the DBA for a 40-foot front yard setback was reduced to 20 feet. It was actually the same exact variance that was approved for the previous application in the lots of the merger.
And that, that back is not open?
Correct.
Thank you.
You said, the, the site plan shows the driveway on the property next door.
That's correct.
And I'm wondering how, in the long run, we ensure that, that the property, the subject property continues to have access to that.
Right, there'll be, there'll be cross easements, what's happening here is, we basically have developed schematics to allow us to build another building similar to the one we're building right now on the other side of the driveway. We're not presenting that right now, and that may, probably will never happen, but the idea is that, you know, there would be cross easements to each of 26 and 38 to allow them to share the driveway essentially.
The properties, at some point in the future, could be owned by different people.
Right, an easement would, it would surround that transfer title.
So, so that the, the right to use that 24-foot access has to go with this piece of property in perpetuity, does it not?
That's, yeah, that's why an easement works, actually, yeah, you don't, you don't set a time limit on an easement or a right of way. And then, I mean, there, in terms of what's very likely to happen there, this property, either one of the properties were to sell, they'd probably sell as a combined property. But once again, it doesn't matter if we have an easement to allow cross, you know, cross access.
Yeah, that, that's good, but counting on what's likely to happen. I just wanna make sure that, that we don't end up at some future date with this property being owned separately and, and having to reconfigure this whole parking and access.
Sure, I get that, that's understandable, um, you know, we could have the town attorney review the easement to make sure that didn't happen, or, you know, I mean, I don't know if the easement's been drafted differently.
I, not the specific language come out of neighborhood, neighborhood, not under the specific language, but it's incorporated into the site plan. The legal descriptions for both easements become part of the record, and I have shown them that just, just below the table chart, or the zoning data chart, I have all created that because it becomes part of the, of the.
So, so both, both properties reflect that easement? I guess, okay, thank you.
Just a few questions for Art, Mr. Trump. Evening, Art. So, I looked at the town engineer's comments, and he's asking for test holes and a design of the drainage, and it appears as though that's all not completed.
It was completed, it was completed and submitted to me on by the final deadline, which was, I got the comments on Friday, the deadline was on Monday, then there was all the changes, he just didn't provide a new report.
Okay, that's, so the test holes actually were completed, and the design is based on the test hole.
Exactly.
Thank you. Is there any plan to light the parking lot?
Yeah, we have a lighting plan, I'm not sure, you should have it in the landscape package.
Quickly, quickly.
I was curious about a wall pack like this.
Sorry?
Building, I'm sorry, I do see it.
Yeah, it makes me a pole light out on the Route 1 side, and then a bollard out with a little patio, and then some, and then a wall pack, okay, thank you.
That, that's my question, Mr. Trump, that's it. Oh, I do have one other question, I'm sorry. There's no compensatory storage required in the floodplain zone here.
Right.
I know you're a student of the, of the regulations, so I'd just like to get on the record, why in this case there's no compensatory excavation required in the building?
Because the, the flood zone is titled influence. If you're in the northern part of the city of town, like Hopbrook, Ryans, and somewhere else, that is, that's, if I were to film a flood zone, I'd have to have compensatory law on it, but that's not the case.
Because it's titled, right. I just want that on the record because it isn't the case everywhere, and compensatory storage is required almost everywhere on the, on the, wow.
Thank you. With respect to the drainage, so it's clear, the zoning requires a one-inch retainage of, of all stormwater from impervious areas. This property, the drainage product exceeds the one-inch compensatory storage. We've analyzed the drainage on 10-year, 25-year, 50-year, 90-year. We have more than half, but, including the roof drains, everything goes into that, into that subsurface drain. It's a little overkill, but it's, it's better, there's no drainage on all stormwater, so that's why we put that up.
Speaking of roof drains, I don't see them depicted anywhere.
I haven't, we haven't done that detail, but they, they're going to, I mean, the drainage, usually I'll leave that up to the, the architect to see if they're wanting to do the, 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 the rain part. The drainage is there, uh, waiting to land.
Needed to those drainage, instances.
Wow. They will be tied into the subsurface drain.
Will we have the final plans?
They will.
Thank you. Any good question?
Um, I just wondered about the signage, looking at the schematics, so the only signage is on the fourth side of the building, correct?
There's a freestanding side on Route 1, the building, the plan is just to the left of where the driveway comes in, close to the pole light, on the site plan.
The building plan is just to the left of where the driveway comes in, close to the pole light on the site plan.
And is that signage within the?
Yeah, it's within the sizes, and such time that we have the actual text. I guess we can, we can get the signage permit or something on that. But that will be confirmed. In the architectural setup, leave on the, one of the sheets actually shows the signs, I think, gives the connections, at least on the front.
Okay, thank you.
Any other side of questions? I do. On the exterior lights, again, the wall pack, it'll be full cutoff, Rusty?
Yeah, so, yeah, it'll cover. Get up there on the electric. Yeah, it'll be, yeah, it won't be full cutoff in terms of the property line, but it'll cover part of the driveway hex wood.
And then I was confused, is there an onsite well?
No, but we could find it, we could not find it.
Okay, so is that, could be wiped off the map, or, so you're using tunnel?
Yeah, you know, we can't find that either. I mean, we, it gets water. The question is, if it's a well, it has to be beneath this building, because I haven't seen it, and I've been there multiple times. And I called the service department, and they said, oh, no, you're on the road.
So it's tunnel. And I assume this is on a slab, it's somewhere, there's no basement?
There is, no, there's no basement.
And lastly, there's, I'm quite familiar with that site, there's two very handsome oak trees there, are those being left alone?
Yeah.
I think I saw on the site plan, they were saying. Oh, they are, okay, they're to the east? Okay. Right. Right. And there's no dumpster, there's garbage cans, and that, but there's still, it's still unencumbered?
Yeah.
Okay. Just double check there with this, if there's some difference. And you think you've met all the town's twenty-two questions? Well, that's it.
Mr. Chairman, I have one other point that I want to make about it.
Please.
It is stipulated in the comments that the planning department sent us, and it's in the plan report. But there is, there is still a moratorium, a connection to the sewer. And that moratorium will be a condition of this application. Town is engaged in a very active program to find capacity that currently is being used by clean water recycling systems through a variety of different sources. And we're confident that we can find that. But there will be a connection stipulation in this application, and you will have to apply for the sewer condition. Capacity will, not sewer, the WPCA, to connect to the sewer and its contingent of capacity to go.
For the record, in Columbus, Water Pollution Control Authority issued a letter after a meeting on Monday, September twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one. The WPCA board agreed to allow fifty thousand gallons per day of additional wastewater flows to intermystic sewer system. This is a selective amount of additional flow to be allocated for projects already approved and not a lifting of the sewer moratorium. Since your project was approved, it's going off of the original application, the one that was approved when the lots were being merged. Since your project was approved, you are currently on our waiting list, and you will be allowed to connect to the mystic sewer system. Please bring this letter to the WPCA offices on the third floor of the town hall, when you are ready to either apply for a building permit or a sewer permit.
Okay, so that's what's prior approval?
It works for this one also.
Okay, fine. Disregard what I just said. You're in a very fortuitous position without getting approved. It's interesting, because I'm reading on page forty, the planning department's report, and it says that this is subject to the moratorium. So I'm pleased that that's not the case, and we want to make sure that that's correct in the reports, and nobody thinks it's subject to the moratorium. So, so thank you.
I guess, just for personal clarification, if it was said approved, I mean, it was approved when the lots were being merged?
Right. So, because it's a separate lot, it's a separate application, just they have to go back and get a whole new variance for the same reason?
So what exactly, so it seems to me that everything that was approved was approved on the contingency that the lots were merged. The lots were not merged, so that approval is no longer valid. So, yeah, I don't see how this is, I'm sorry, I don't see how this was pre-approved.
What we did was, and I'll answer this question for you, because I was at the WPCA meeting. And I was not aware, again, because of the comment that's in the report, it appeared as though this were going to be approved subject to the new moratorium.
Right.
And, but what we did specifically state, that any projects that had been approved subject to the first moratorium, they fell within a list of projects, this must have been on that list. That's why our, that's why Doug Middleton issued the letter to those projects that were on the list. We knew what the capacity was that they required, and we actually have that capacity. So we allowed those projects to move forward. However, everything from this point forward, which I thought this project fell into, and you probably did as well, everything from this point forward will be subject to a sewer moratorium again until we find the source of a lot of clean water that's getting into the system that is using up capacity that the town actually thought they had, and don't. So it's a fairly simple process. You know, cite an example, there's an article in today's paper about the city of New Britain. And the city of New Britain had the same problem, they have an old system, there's a lot of infiltration, a lot of clean water getting into the system, using up the capacity of the system. The city did a study, I N I study, just like we're doing here, and they found that forty-one percent of the water in the system was clean water. And they reduced the flow by that amount through, you know, this I N I study, and that's what we've got to do here. So we're in the process of doing it. Even the new projects that get approved, I'm encouraged that we can find the capacity, but we have to put that moratorium on new projects, this would not be one.
So what you're saying is that all the projects that we have approved to date that have been subject to the moratorium are now free to move ahead?
Right.
What I can do tomorrow is send you all this stuff.
Four units across the street?
It's no problem, you could have a list.
Okay, so we'd be very happy.
That's correct.
Okay.
So, that is, that is the situation. And hopefully, we'll be in a situation where we find, you know, a lot of low-hanging fruit, like roof drains, yard drains, entrance basins, and parking lots that are the source of massive amounts of info, that is clean water that shouldn't be going to the wastewater.
Any more questions for these? Are there any comments in favor of this application? In opposition to this application? Any other questions on the side? Want to close it, want to close the hearing?
Yeah.
I would move to close the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so we have two votes, we have the CAM and the special use permit.
That's the three, Mr. Chairman, that's the waiver.
Excuse me, three, because I missed my own notes. Yes, let's do the waivers first.
Mr. Chairman, I move the waivers requested by the applicant, stipulated on page eighteen of the planning department's report. Be approved.
Second. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I skipped over a staff report, if you have more input, put into a.
No, I do not.
Okay. Thank you, Lynn, thank you.
Gave you a chance.
I zoomed right over you.
That's what's important.
You can thank me for that.
Back with a motion about the waivers, just in second, if I believe? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next would be the CAM.
Chairman, I move approval of the CAM application on this property.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So move.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the special permit application as submitted by the applicant for this property.
Second.
I would just like to talk about, so are there, to your point, I was getting to the two lots, et cetera, are there anything that we can proceed even off of there, that there is no, no part of the, the rival of that thing? Building on a lot, an easement on another lot?
If the easement is recorded in both, on both property records, should not be a problem. Shouldn't.
It finds all successors and assigns as well, so. So an easement for a particular purpose, whether it's for utility, or whether it's for a driveway, is a perpetual right. And it can't be extinguished in a sale. You have to be careful when you sell the property that you also sold easement. But, you know, that's the reason to hire a firm instead of closing, to make sure that those things happen. The applicant in this case has submitted a description of the easement, the Thomasite Plan, right along the zoning panel. And it fully describes the easement in a meteors balance description, so it goes all around the easement. So it is, it's a good question, because common driveways are a common problem, but it's usually because there's no easement for it, in this case, in this case, there is. I do want to amend my motion to include the conditions that are recommended in the planning report, those in stipulations of the town engineer and various other agencies. So I'm including the stipulations that are included in the planning.
Is it one, two, five?
Yes.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry.
Back to gentlemen.
Open up public hearing, P Z two-one-two-seven, S U P, uh, B G L L C, special use permit application for a full-service on-premise liquor sales permit for existing Grass and Bone Restaurant. Property located at twenty-four East Main Street, assessors map one into block four, lot nine, zone LS five.
Do we need to go over the ground rules one more time, or everybody's familiar with them?
I think I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
For the record, I suppose, one more time, Captain, I'd like to myself, Ben Ferbert, Lynn Conway, and Ryan D Z are in charge. Now, it's all good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Bill Sweeney, I'm a land use attorney and a partner to the law firm at Cleveland Carberry in London, Connecticut. Joining me tonight is Aaron Lately. Aaron is the owner of Holbeast LLC. He owns it with his partner, business partner, James Wardwell, as well. We have an application pending before this commission tonight for a special permit to add full liquor service to an existing restaurant in Mystic, Grass and Bone, which I think you're all familiar with. It's located at twenty-four East Main Street. This is an LS five zone property. Some of you may have been on the commission several years ago, when I came in with Holbeast, when it was primarily owned by Dan Meiser, who operates Engine Room and Oyster Club in Mystic. Dan is no longer involved with Holbeast, and Aaron and James are the new operators of the business. This commission granted a special permit at that time for wine and beer service only with the restaurant. Dan's moved on, as I said, but Aaron and James, Aaron and James now operate the business. They are committed to maintaining the same high-quality restaurant, the same quality food experience that I think Mystic frequent, people who frequent Mystic have come to know and love. But they're going to make it their own restaurant as well, with their own twist. It'll be probably a bit more upscale, a little bit more on fine dining rather than takeout. But we're going to see how that goes in the coming months. Proposal before you, though, makes no changes to the restaurant itself. There's no changes in seating, we originally approved the fifty-two seats. We have a little bit less than that inside right now because of COVID, just to create a little bit more separation. Our number of employees, if they create a shift, five is not changing with our proposal. Our hours of operation, which are eight AM, eight PM daily, and nine PM on Saturdays, that's not changing either. We're not changing the interior layout of the premises at all. There's no exterior changes to the building, no site work, no changes to the onsite parking. We're not adding a consumer bar. We're not proposing any amplified live entertainment. Bottom line is, we have no changes whatsoever, except when you go to Grass and Bone and you order a meal, you can choose not only a beer or a wine, but you could have a cocktail. And that's the only reason we're here tonight, that's the only thing that's before the board. As you know, there's dozens of full-service restaurants with liquor restaurant permits in the greater Mystic area. Our setup, particularly as a small place with very limited hours, and we close literally at eight PM or nine PM at night, certainly does not encourage a late-night bar scene, which I know some people have concerns with, with adjacent neighbors. Police commission has reviewed our application, and they were very pleased to see that we're not expanding the hours, that we're keeping the nature of the business the same, and so they endorsed our plan last week. We have requested waivers of the typical site plan requirements, because there are no changes to our site whatsoever, and waivers of many of the special permit requirements, because this is an unusual application. It's just basically adding the ability to have mixed drinks in the facility. Certainly, we don't believe that there is any impact to infrastructure, any impact to public safety. Transportation's network is adequate, no impact to the neighborhood. It's certainly consistent with laws and regulations. We will need to go to the State Liquor Commission to modify our restaurant permit, which we currently have. And we think it's consistently the plan of conservation and development, which urges us to support existing small businesses in the greater Mystic area. And Grass and Bone has become part of the fabric of downtown Mystic, and with Aaron and James now at the wheel, certainly we look forward to having them continue their success. That is it for my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Any questions? No dedicated space for a bar?
No, it wasn't in the original application, and there's none in this application. All beverages, whether alcoholic or non-alcoholic, are served from a service station with waiters, and that's just not the scene that we're trying to create in the facility. If in the future we decide we want that, we would have to come back. Reason being is our initial special permit for the facility actually has a condition, no consumer bar. So, and that holds even with this request for modification. If the business plan calls for that in the future, we'll need to come back before you.
You can't pull up a bar stool and have a drink, have a dedicated bar.
Yeah, we don't have a bar, and that's an important question. Remember, there is the zoning aspect here, but there's also the state liquor control. You have to basically identify consumer bars in your state liquor permit. So if we're approved tonight, tomorrow morning, I'll be pulling out the on-premise liquor application and start filling it out for Candy's signature. So I think it's a very straightforward application, it's a good local business with new owners, and certainly want to wish them the best of success.
Comments from the public? Or against? And opposed? Any other questions? The motion will be closed?
Make a motion, Mr. President.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So we have two votes, this is not, not three, waivers and yes for two.
Right.
Should the candy former?
Yes, excuse me.
Choose to make a motion to approve if I suggest you have stipulations of original approval shall apply.
I understand.
Stipulations of original approval shall apply.
But? With one stipulation?
I can be more, just because I'm.
I think, can you just, because I want to make sure the consumer bar?
That's a good point.
Yeah.
Right. So, um, let me ask a question. So that was the original stipulation. And if we went ahead and approved this and then six months later, we decided to put a consumer bar, what is, and say, well, we already had bar. We already, you know, it's no impact to the, on the neighborhood because we're in the zone area and et cetera. What, what are the grounds then?
Don't the enforcement officer?
They would, they would require a building permit. To get a building permit, they need a zoning permit. And when the zoning permit comes in, I realize, oh no, this is violating a special use permit. You need to apply for a new special use permit.
It has come before us, again.
Right.
Yeah. Correct.
Correct. I guess. All right, all right.
So we have the waivers and yes for two.
Motion to approve the waivers?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Question, Mr. President? Who is it, where is he?
Motion to approve the special use permit with a stipulation?
And this stipulation that?
Yes.
Conditions for the prior approval.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay.
All righty.
Back to the board, I want to.
Yeah.
Yes. One more public hearing?
Okay. Our final application for tonight is PC 2128 SUP, Garberino and Garberino V4 Enterprises LLC, special use permit application for wine and beer, on-premise liquor sale permit for existing Nanas, Pizzeria and Bakery Retail Restaurant. Property located at 32 Williams Avenue, Mystic, Assistant's Map 161, Block 16, Lot 2, Zone LS 5.
So, she this evening, thank you. I'd like to myself Ben Ferber, Lynn Conway, and Ryan DZ. We'll have the applicant, comments, discussion, rebuttal, closing, and a vote. Thank you, wait.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Try not to make it too much like Dave, but. For the record, my name is Bill Sweeney. I'm a land use attorney and a partner at the law firm at Cleveland Carberry in New London, Connecticut. Here tonight on behalf of Holbeast LLC, which is my client, Aaron Lately is here. He's one of the principals of the company. Holbeast operates more than one restaurant in the greater Mystic area and they also operate Nanas, Pizzeria and Bakery. And as I said before, there's going to be some change in ownership. And that includes for Nanas as well. Their operation is behind SeaSwirl on 32 Williams Avenue. It is located also in an LS 5 zone. We've applied for a special permit to add restaurant beer and wine only sales. There is no liquor permit on the premises right now. They'd like to be able to serve beer and wine to the customers. Very similar to the last application before you. We're not making any changes to seating, interior layout, employees, the hours of operations, which I will put for the record, this is all in my application, is 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. We are not making any changes, as I said, to the interior layout. There is no consumer bar. There is no exterior or site work associated with the application. We're not proposing any amplified live entertainment. Again, what we're doing is so if you get a piece of pizza, you will now have the choice of being able to have a beer or a glass of wine. We don't think that that will have any impact whatsoever to the surrounding neighborhood. It's wholly consistent with the restaurant uses that are all over Mystic and quite frankly, much less than some of the other ones. Our police mission has reviewed this application as well last week and afforded a favorable recommendation. We have requested waiver, site plan, and other special permit requirements similar to the last application. And again, we don't believe, for the record, we don't believe there's any impact to infrastructure, public safety. The transportation network is adequate. There's no, like I said, no impact to the surrounding neighborhood. It's consistent with state law on liquor and it supports, again, another small and established local business and just giving them a little bit of more flexibility in their sales. This is obviously a much smaller operation than Grass and Bone. Both my client feels that as they begin to take over these businesses, that we give them a little bit more flexibility going forward. So with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
The big, the big difference between Nanas and Grass and Bone is that Nanas has essentially no indoor seating.
It has eight seats inside.
Eight?
Eight, correct. It is allowed eight as a retail restaurant.
Okay, I counted three today. But if you say it's eight, it's eight. It's mostly takeout as opposed to.
Yeah, without a doubt.
As opposed to Grass and Bone, which is most, which is virtually all, I guess, sit-down dining. I guess you can do some takeout. So I see a huge difference. I don't know why, why we would want a, a takeout restaurant to have any sort of a liquor permit. Get a slice of pizza and a beer and get in your car and drive down Route 1. You know, it's asking for trouble, I think.
But you can't do that. I mean, you can't serve that alcohol. There was a period of time during COVID you could do things, but you can't do that. Under state law, restaurants with restaurant liquor permits require on-premise consumption. And so you have to actually have it on-premise. You can't take it and leave. The only exception to that is if you're serving four-four meals and you get a bottle of wine, you can cork your bottle of wine and take it with you like any other restaurant. But you can't, for instance, go up to a counter and say, I want a six-pack of beer and a large pizza. That's not allowed under Connecticut state law.
So it never happens. Okay, never mind.
I, I just think, I, I think that, you know, I represent a lot of clients before the liquor commission. There's a couple areas of my practice. And if you did that, that's, that is a great way to get your license not only suspended but revoked really quickly. You just can't do that at all. There are very strict delineations between on-premise consumption and off-premise. Off-premise being things like package stores, for example, or supermarkets. And on-premise being like restaurants and cafes. Totally different permit classes. If you start mixing those two, you're not only going to be up in Hartford in front of the three liquor commissioners, you're going to lose the permit.
So on-premises would include the picnic tables and so, so forth out and around the.
Perhaps. We'd have to get state approval for those picnic tables. And that could be difficult, quite frankly. Again, as I said before, you have to have approval from both the local municipality and the state to be able to serve liquor. So the property at 32 Williams has picnic tables out toward the water, which you can buy an ice cream phone at SeaSwirl and go and set at them. Typically, the state requires you to have defined control over an outdoor patio area. That outdoor patio area should be signed and it also needs to be segregated. Right now it's not, so that can't be used as a patio in its, in its current location.
So.
Yeah, that's a question. So then you wouldn't be able to take the beer out there.
You'd have to have.
Not, not as it's set up right now.
Not as, okay.
Do you envision trying to get that accomplished?
We would have to negotiate with the landlord to do that because it's not set up like that right now. Those are general open for anybody on the property.
Well, you have to come back in front of us.
Right, you have to be on the site plan and you'd have to commit. Or the zoning permit would be denied and you'd be sent back.
So just to be clear, denied, this is just indoor service only?
That's the only thing that's in our application. And again, I'm not even sure that that's even possible on that property because you have to have a defined area that's actually segregated. You can't have people from SeaSwirl bringing in ice cream foam into your liquor patio. It's not allowed by state law.
We, I didn't even stipulate that, make a stipulation that it would only be put indoors.
Your application state, is the application state just indoor?
That's the only thing that's in my application right now.
It's indoor.
So we put a stipulation this time now, outdoor.
Yeah.
And, and if, and if, and if sometime in the future we're able to get that from the, from the landlord, we can come back and show you what it is. But it would have to be different than it is now. I couldn't go to the state the way it's laid out right now.
Okay.
So how long has your business been open? It's been a full year. And.
That's Aaron, for the record, that's Aaron Lately.
Okay. And although your permit is eight seats inside, you currently have how many? Three? Four. Four seats.
I think.
And what percentage of your business is, uh, takeout?
I'll just come up here so you can see this. Percentage right now of takeout, I would say is about 45% is takeout.
And is that the breakfast takeout or the?
That, that's the, that's the entire business.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
Uh huh.
There, if you've driven by, you'll see a lot of people eating breakfast outside during the daytime.
So, okay, go ahead.
So the established for a year, there's currently four seats and almost half of your business is takeout.
Right. I would just like to correct something on the record. While there may be four seats today, propose floor plan, we show, we're not changing anything inside, but there are eight seats shown on the floor plan that was submitted with our application. 250 seats.
Yeah, but what you have established today is four seats and what you have established for the last year is?
That's correct. We're allowed to have 150.
Yeah.
Do you have servers on?
Yeah, we have like a cashier, fast casual.
No, Amanda, like a waitress, waiter, wait person.
If, if we were to have, serve alcohol, yes, we would have them all tip-certified as normal servers in the state would be. And then they would be making these drinks, pouring beer and bringing out.
So, so they would be the ones responsible for controlling?
Exactly.
Controlling that it be inside rather than out?
Anything leaving, yes, absolutely.
Any other questions? Does that support? We have nothing. You vote for or against?
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
This question?
Should the commission choose to approve that they do offer one stipulation, no alcohol consumption of alcohol without further approval from the state?
I'm sorry. Yeah, you're right. I did skip over that.
Will we reopen, reopen the public hearing?
Please reopen. Public hearing, who are you? Sorry, Carly.
For the record, my name is Carly Don Gilmore. Attorney, the attorney said that they, the application was for inside only. When I read it, it says on-premise. Premises to me means the whole property. So I think there's a question here about whether or not we have the liquor sales. Maybe the stipulations that's being proposed by staff would cover that. I just, I think we need some time.
Good point, thank you. Can you rebuttal?
This is a leased property. We don't own rental properties, so the premises is an internal area. And as I said before, it's a part of my testimony, the outdoor seating is not part of the premise. It's shared among the other tenants as well, so it's not part of the premise. And in, under Connecticut liquor law as well, the premises is defined as an indoor area of a restaurant or backyard. So just want to make that clear on the record. Thank you.
Counselor, does that mean, I know Grass and Bone has an outdoor area. Does that mean they don't serve liquor out there?
They have an outdoor, they have an outdoor area under Governor Lamont's COVID order, which supersedes Connecticut liquor law, I mean Connecticut zoning law.
That's a temporary.
We call it COVID patio, which I do a lot of work in other towns. COVID patios are going to be a major issue come March.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and, and there's a lot of talk, you know, about keeping COVID patios, having another executive order extending them, but they're never going, they're not going to be extended forever. And so it's, it is challenging because it's not just Holbeast, but I have a number of clients in a number of towns that have modified their business model to include COVID patios, which might be taken away next spring. And how do you deal with that? And so I, you know, I would urge the commission to think about that. And I know, I know, for instance, in New London, Norwich, and in Ledger, they're already looking at that as, what are we going to do with our businesses when that ends? But to answer your question, that is a COVID patio.
Got it, thank you.
What a name.
I think, I think I'm going to, I'm going to take vacation next March.
All right, so now we close the hearing.
Move we close public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the 14 waivers submitted by the applicant, applicant and a stipulated on page 32 of the planning report.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eric?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the application on this property, subject to the stipulation that, can you just repeat that, Candy, please? I want to make sure we get the line correct.
No alcohol consumption of alcohol without further approval from the commission.
Subject to the condition as, as just read by staff. Second.
So I, I just think that, Chairman, this question.
Dismissed.
I don't think that this property, this business has been established, that this wouldn't be kind of an expansion. Sure, it might not be a physical expansion, et cetera, but I, I'm not sure that, you know, a three-seat, four-seat, you know, with the majority being takeout, et cetera. I don't, I don't think that we can say this is an established, you know, business of this nature. And I, I think that this should be done. I think they have staffing, I don't, you know, it's not established to do this. They don't have, you know, a winged staff. They have a cashier. It's, it's just outside the scope of what has been established for this business.
My, my concern is similar. I think controlling the dispensing of liquor in, in that particular environment can be very problematic. And, and I don't, I think maybe we ought to see that the, you know, that the property is more well-defined and, and separate from, you know, the ice cream operation and the gas station, whatever else is there right, right around it. Right now, I mean, you could fit the whole thing in less space than this table takes up. And can't imagine, can't imagine a 20-year-old wait person having the authority to say, you can have your beer, but you have to drink it inside. You can't take it out to the picnic tables. I, I just think it's asking for trouble. So I, I would be inclined to, to vote against the application itself.
In addition, there's nothing on that property. So SeaSwirl, Donuts, Bites, there's a car, something.
Yeah, pizza place now. Well, it's not there yet. Yeah.
I, I think, you know, I don't deny that, that there's, you know, a premises this small, that there isn't a control.
I think.
I think there is one, but, but I think if that issue exists, it exists in any establishment. And anybody can try to walk out and drink. You know, I, I know it's illegal and I would never do it, but, but, you know, I don't see why we would discriminate against a place that is based on its size. This, this is a business model that says that they want to operate the way that most pizza places operate. Most of them have beer and wine for it. And if they can live within the confines of the, of the laws of the state to connect, if they can keep their license, if they. If they can't, they're going to lose it. But I don't think, I don't think there's any more of a challenge here, and I don't think we should discriminate based on the size of the establishment or how long it has been in place. Because if they had asked for this in the beginning, they probably would have given it to them when they first opened. So I, I don't, I think it's prejudicial to, you know, say that because of its size or how long it's been there, we don't want to approve this application. I certainly respect the right of anybody to vote any way they want to. I'm going to vote in favor of the application, because I think with the stipulation that we've placed, and the liquor laws in the state of Connecticut, excellent presentation the attorney Sweeney gave us here tonight, I think we're prepared.
It's not size, it's more the characteristics of operations, it's more the fact that it's... That there is such extremely limited indoor controllable seating, that it seems to me that it's going to be very, very difficult to make that work.
I don't disagree.
Okay. So passing it on to the State Liquor Commission is something we could do, I guess, but then I'm not sure why we would want to do that.
Yeah, if I may, I agree with the...
Yeah.
I think it's discriminatory, first of all, to say, well, it's only been in existence for a year, so that's going to be held against them, and we won't approve something like this. I think it's also the stipulation that we've made, we've done everything we can to say, okay, you know, we have the concerns, and we're making that very clear, that you follow these guidelines, to stay within the bounds. Everything else, it's legal, and a lot of the other businesses around those kind of businesses have those same kind of challenges, if you will, getting people from going outside and then coming inside. And that's up to them to manage that and to adhere to it.
Okay. But the fact that the outside isn't defined to them is an issue.
We're defining it within the, I mean, what's approved, or just the word of mine by saying, you can only do it from the side, express with, you will not do it outside. And I realize, and I understand, and think, okay, how's that going to be controlled? But I think that's something that any business would have to, you know, deal with.
You know, they advertise themselves as a bakery, as a bakery and a pizzeria. I just, we didn't ask, we break down their business, etc., but, you know, I just think it's not advisable to give a, you know, a wine and beer liquor license to this establishment. I just... It's bakery.
I disagree with...
Any discussion?
Okay, a vote, we'll go one by one.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Let's have... That we do. Thank you. Maybe if we have another... You know, people just ignore the votes. You have more to say? But, you know, it's... Anyway.
Of course, ten. At seven o'clock in the morning. You know, the time period where liquor is allowed to be sold is governed by the state of Connecticut period. You can govern the hours of operation of a restaurant, and you can't govern the time period of the... I had no idea. I knew it's on 7:00 AM, but no, it's before you.
Must be no score yet. No score yet.
No text yet. No score.
I think you still have to, item nine, the new submittal, scheduled for November 16.
You don't...
You don't do that here? Okay. All right. Then the November 3 meeting, it's been pushed from a Tuesday to a Wednesday, and I don't believe we have any action items on it. So the commission needs to deliberate on perhaps canceling that meeting.
I was going to recommend we cancel the November 3 meeting.
Certainly.
Good idea.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, please, close.
Close the meeting? Motion to close?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.